Okay, great. So yes, we'll now transition to the recap of our breakout room.
Did Sandy, did you want to carry?
I was gonna say, I took notes. So do you want me to keep going, Valerie? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. So we started in on the discussion about what, what, yeah, what the tribal hub wants to look like, what it, what we, we want it to look like. And there were a lot of, a lot of information that was, was shared. There's, there's, we do need to meet, we need to have a probably a daily long work session to say, okay, this is what it's going to look like. But I'm gonna recap, sit some highlights for you, because we want a better ownership of the agenda as far as what's coming to us, about what resources and materials are coming, coming to us, maybe some sort of a betting process, probably similar to like what the G to G does, right? There's a betting process that goes on there. I definitely want to have some built in time for that networking piece where we could problem solve and talk with our fellow directors or whatever, and say, yeah, I ran into that problem, let's, and have that networking piece going on there. Especially when around funding opportunities, because there are other funding opportunities that may become available that are not necessarily through the ELD. It's very important to us that we have a hybrid option in these meetings, that we, that we continue to honor that, that we are still dealing with it with the pandemic, and we need to be, to be cognizant of that. So very much a hybrid, hybrid model. And then it's really about information sharing and, and that we do, we, this group already has really strong representation from all nine of the tribes, right? We're all, we, they're supposed to be two of us, two of us from every, every tribe is here already. So we, we feel like we are a capable enough group, that we are a, a, a deep thinking enough group, that we can come up with what we want our hub to look like moving forward. And it may not look like what other hubs look like, but it will fit the needs of the tribes that are here at the table. So if we could arrange a, a time, a space where we can hammer that out as to what that looks like. As Randy talked about, we had some goals, those are our swim lanes, we'd like to build a pool now. Okay.
Awesome. Are there any other comments or tidbits that any of you, any else, or excuse me, anyone else would like to share or state right now?
I just said that I was willing to meet for an all day in person and or hybrid, whichever way that we, we choose to go forward, I'll, I'll do a one day all day workshop. For CT Clusey.
So speaking of that, we have, we have two dates proposed. I, I think if it's possible, we could get people to take a vote in the chat. The dates are potentially this upcoming August 2nd, which would be 8:30 to AM to 4:30 PM for an all day special meeting. And August 10th for an all day same times, 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 PM.
Valerie, are those the same days that you asked us through the poll?
Yes.
So I think that Josh and I already chose the same day, but, and I think it was the second day, when you're looking at that?
Yeah, August 10th.
Okay.
August 10th?
Yeah, and, and no need to go to the doodle poll and participate. I think we can go ahead and just put it in the chat, and that would be great. Sorry about that. Looks like only direct messages are in the chat right now. I'll have to change that. But I'm seeing August 10th. Someone said August 2nd, but it looks like we have now three people or three of you all TAC members, four now for August 10th. And Sandy, 10th, great. So it looks like majority is, oh, I changed it, there we go. Majority is August 10th right now, so we will work on getting that scheduled and continue building the agenda with you all and presenting materials and information that may be considered for that, that meeting. I think that you have some really good feedback already around like what funding can look like with this, this tribal hub work, and we do have some funding that we want to talk to you all about related to this work, to see where you might set priorities of how you'd want to spend that, or even just like if, if that's through direct agreements with each of you all, each of the nine tribes. So I think that that's a good, probably will take up a, a good hour to hour and a half of our time during our in-person. So I just want to preface with that. And then, and then answering some of those bigger umbrella questions, like what, you know, what does the tribal hub look like? How may it be, how may it be similar or very different from some of the existing regional hubs? And many of you may have things that you have interacted with a regional hub that you really like or that you dislike, that we definitely want to hear about and see how we can incorporate those ideas into the process. Let's see.
Larry, just to confirm, we're talking about Salem, Oregon, correct?
Yes, this would be hosted in Salem at the Early Learning Division offices. So, yeah. And we're able to help with, you know, any arrangements for travel and stuff. So I just think, you know, as you're planning, feel free to connect with me and we can, and I can walk you through processes for helping arrange for anything that you might need, and then we'll send out, you know, a map and things. I'm not sure all of you have been to the ELD offices yet, but if you haven't, we'll make sure you have like the parking information and a map of the building and structure so that you guys don't get lost. Big building, but. Is, is there anything else that you want to share out, Sandy, in terms of the breakout session and just?
Well, it feels, it feels as though, it feels as though, and I may, and I'm gonna summarize for the group, and you need to tell me when I'm going south. But it feels as though that the, the push for a tribal hub started from very, very grassroots needs, very simple, very grassroots needs. And, but the formulation of moving it forward has become very bogged down with bureaucracy. And, and we are struggling with that. Because we would like to take it back to a more, a more simple, these were our needs, this is why we wanted to form this, and here we go. And there may be a balance to be struck there. I understand that we're working in, you know, within a, you know, I understand what we're working within, and there's probably a balance to be struck there. But I, I think if we can, can, can lean back to the pure intent and purpose and not so much bureaucracy and clear and more effective communication as we're sharing and moving ideas across these different, different lanes, different avenues. I think that's super important. I think that's where we've gone, we've gone sideways a couple of different times, and that's, that seems to be the root of it, is not that, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that this, the point of this, right? Like, I love you saying that, that it's grassroots, the intentionality behind it was like access. And if we're definitely having a lot of the bureaucratic processes and procedures sort of take over, that doesn't feel good, and it doesn't feel like we're creating accessible, inaccessible opportunity even through this legislation. So I appreciate you mentioning that. And so we will, I know that Alyssa and I have chatted, you know, and feel free to add anything, Alyssa, but we have talked about, you know, how, like what we're on the hook for as it comes to the legislation and like what the ELD's role is for carrying out this legislation, since we're holding, you know, the funding attached to this legislation and we're helping to convene this group. So we want to make sure that we, we, we're, we're actually, you know, planning to bring all that information and present it to you all, you know, prior to our in-person working session, I think, and just see like over email, you know, if we can add some information to that day around, like just talking about that and saying, you know, putting it on the table and saying, this is what we have to meet as it comes down to the legislation and what, what kind of reports and things are going to be required of this work going forward, so that you all have a good idea of what those timelines look like. And, and so just simply to say, you know, we're, we're wanting to work at the speed of trust and be able to like shift, and we can take as long as we need to, but there are going to be certain things that we'll have to probably provide along the way. But, and we'll make sure that you guys have that information upfront.
So that's kind of like the running boards of the bureaucracy or the sideboards of the bureaucracy that we have to operate in, right? We've got X amount of time, you gotta have a method of getting rid of the dollars, you have to have a method of reporting. So if we have those sideboards clearly defined for us, right? And what they are, just real simple, boom, 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 then, then I feel like we would be in a better position to say, okay, so those are your needs that we have to meet, now let's factor in the needs that we want, and then you come up with a model that would work both ways.
Yeah.
Sandy, I completely agree. I wonder, not to take us completely off course into what we'll do in August, but I'm wondering, Sandy, if you or Valerie or others could just share kind of your quick top of mind needs that really kind of cultivated this grassroots roots movement, just so we can kind of get a little bit of that, just quick touch base as we're thinking about the sideboards and making sure we have the same intentions in mind.
Sure, I actually had a little document that I typed up that was tribal hub notes, just hang on, I'll pull it up again.
Perfect.
Or I think I'll pull it up again, that may require me to. Yeah, baby. Easier said than done.
I can pull that up. Are you talking about the notes that were taken, Sandy?
This is what we wanted. Yeah. Got it. Yeah. There, I'm back again. Yes, so, so it's my understanding, because again, I wasn't here, I wasn't here with Valerie and Modesta on that real super grassroots, hey, we need to do this moving forward. I've stepped in a little later, but Valerie and I have talked about this, and we talked about this with Cayus. But the goal, the simplest goals were, is that the tribes have very unique problems. So we want a grievance system to address the unique problems that we have, right? A good grievance system for us to work through this stuff, like certifying teachers, right? That's a, that's a kind of a unique problem to the tribe. So we wanted that, we wanted a process to do that. We wanted a clearer and more direct funding opportunities and process so that we don't get in situations where we're small operations and we, we're not getting funding streams like we should, and now we're running at the red, and I've got to take money from someplace else, right? So funding was, was the deal. And that networking piece, right? That networking piece that says, hey, I can sit down and talk with my friends at CT Clusey or Burns Payute, say, yeah, how you guys handling this? How you handling that? Or bringing opportunities like, oh yeah, we've got a great steam hub here in Douglas County, and let me share with some of the cool things that we've done, and maybe there's something you can do in your area. And quality consultation, right? Quality consultation in regards to processes and procedures and rulemaking, moving things forward. We don't want to be a box that we gets checked. So those, those were the four just real top level goals that we wanted to, to walk away with in a tribal hub.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, Sandy.
Would anyone else, in addition to what Sandy just gave a quick overview over, have any specific examples or things that they're thinking have been extreme, maybe daunting or processes that have been, you know, unintentionally, you know, causing issues with your, you know, access or ability to participate in, in programming or services or funding?
Do you mean with the hubs that are in existence now, Valeria, maybe that?
Yeah, I think with the hubs that are in existence currently, or even directly with, with the Early Learning Division. You know, we know that you guys, some of you tribes elect to volunteer license through our Office of Childcare, and we know that that process has come up with some specific issues around, you know, authority and, and, and sort of just compliance and, and general issues. So we're, we're just really wanting to know what kinds of things could a tribal hub really help create, you know, pathways for and, and ensure that, you know, not more interaction, you know, with, with each of your tribes, you know, causes issues, but really that we have laid out a pathway and laid out, you know, those swim lanes for the best success.
One that comes to mind is, you know, when the early learning hubs were being designed, we were, it was more like an, we were an afterthought. And, you know, then we were in, they said, well, we didn't know who to invite from the tribe to these meetings. And so we had a Health and Human Services Director going, we had a Head Start Director going. They asked me, you know, and so they reached out to a lot of people, but in, in that process, you know, whatever program was sitting at the table was advocating for something that they wanted to see whether or not that was something that the early learning, the early childhood education center needed or wanted.
That's really helpful. So I'm hearing too that it may be really useful for you all as part of this tribal hub for us to understand who is at what tables and like the, the direct impact that it has on the specific programs and make sure that it's the right folks, because it's, we know, you know, and we say this, you know, that the people closest to the problems are also closest to the solutions, right? And so you understand those problems more uniquely, and so definitely want to be keeping tabs on that and understanding where the impact is. I see Christina has some comments. I'm gonna go ahead and read those aloud, but I think everyone can see. Christina says that I'd like to see our mission statement explored and an action plan developed, which focuses on the goals and objectives that we want to meet within the certain timeframe. I'd like a tribal hub website developed which can be used towards community engagement efforts. Great. Thank you for those comments, Christina.
I just had one other, I didn't want to forget, so that's why I typed it in the chat, but I just have one other thing. So I'm currently on the South Coast Region Early Learning Hub here in Coos County. So one of the questions, the thoughts that I've just been kind of, that's just been going through my head is, we focus strictly on our local communities, and generally that's what the state, the hubs, they have, you know, different areas of the state, they focus on those specific areas within the hub geographical right section. So as far as there being a tribal hub, I think one of the things that I get a little bit confused on is how we're defining our service area. You know, obviously we have tribes representing, you know, from across the state. So when we talk about like community investment funds or engaging our communities or receiving funding and then distributing that out to our different tribal communities, what does that really look like? And how are we making sure that those procedures in place also allow for equitability between the different tribes? So my understanding is, is like with the current hub, and I know not everyone, maybe too, I always want to point out that maybe not everyone on these calls is a part of a hub or really understands how hubs work. But my understanding of early learning hubs is that funding is allocated to them through the state, and then they're in charge of distributing, you know, reviewing funding applications, those community investment dollars, and then distributing those to different early learning organizations or partnerships in their, in their local communities. So as a tribal hub, my understanding is, is that process will obviously look a little different, right? Like, we would have to design what that looks like for us related to the funding opportunities and making sure, like, I don't know if each, how that will really play out, and I, I think that that's just, if I'm making sense, that's just one thing that I've been thinking about is that will definitely be different because we're really representing the entire state where our tribes are located, rather than just our specific geographical areas where those specific hubs are, if that makes sense. So that's just something I've just been thinking about.
But it'd be helpful to maybe have our Community Systems Director come talk about how the hub structure we have now is currently set up, because we've definitely been kind of changing the way we've used them.
Absolutely. I think that that would be really beneficial, especially for members of this committee who maybe aren't as well versed or super, you know, like they might not understand how certain early learning hubs operate. So I think that would be really beneficial educational for us.
Great. We'll, we'll queue that up then, and I'll invite Carmen and some of her team to come talk to you all about that, maybe.
That would be, that would be good in the, in the first part of that all day workshop to kind of lay that groundwork out, like, okay, so here's this, right? That's how they're supposed to work. But, but I, it's gonna be a very interesting overlay. Christine, I think you make a really strong point of hubs are regional, tribal's the state, so is it gonna, it, it can't really look like a regional hub. I mean, it can, but it can't, right? I, I, the more we talk, I just envision this as being more of the, of the, like the educational G to G cohort, only much narrowed, more narrowed down, right? We don't, we're not gonna hear from the heck, and, right? That kind of stuff, it's like, zoom, here we are, this is just early learning stuff.
Valerie, Valerie, is it okay to ask a question?
Of course.
Could, on your agenda, could, could the, um, there be a section, a lead section or a beginning section of whoever's idea it was to begin this whole thing? If they could speak for like five to 10 minutes on, you know, the foundation of why, why we, why this was something that we needed to create? So that kind of, it kind of gets everybody up to speed on who, who, who was there in the beginning, whoever that is? If they're not here anymore, at least to acknowledge the people that, you know, got this rolling.
Yeah. I'll add that. I know Val was definitely very instrumental in that process and a few others, Modesta. So maybe that's something Val, that you and Modesta and whoever else you know was there at that time could.
Sonya.
Sonya, thank you, thank you. Okay. Any other comments or things that are coming to mind for folks as we've heard a little bit from just the different problems and sort of perspectives around, you know, building this tribal hub and, and the development of it? I, I'm, I'm curious to hear too, like, if there were like a tribal hub website, how would you want to interact with that, or what would you expect to be on that website potentially to, you know, make your lives easier or, or point maybe even your families or, or people to, that you connect with and partner with on a regular basis?
I would love to see like a childcare resource list of each of the tribal communities that we serve. So like, for us down here in Coos Bay, it would be like childcare, like current childcare providers, their contact information, resources related to like subsidy or any chat, you know, any kind of childcare information. And even any like preschool programs, so preschool promise or Head Start, baby promise. So I know some, there's some overlap maybe with like the early learning, what we already have on that website. But I think more information that's maybe specifically related to tribal communities, which would also be really beneficial too for that. And then I'd also like to see, I'm just brain, just thinking out loud here, but even kind of when we talk about our mission statement and our values and what we want to achieve, information related to that on the website, so that if community members or parents or whoever it is goes to that website, they know who's working on this work and why this work is important, and the tribal input that we provided related to the work that we're doing. So that could include, you know, all the different committee members, their name, their contact information, what they currently do, so their current position, if they're enrolled tribal members. And really also maybe like a tutorial or something related to how long they've worked for their tribe or just any experience related to like their tribal, you know, tribal ownership and that input that they have in their tribal communities.
We're in the process right now of a request for applications for our website, because we'll be moving on to the organ.gov platform in a way from kind of what we've been doing separately. And so I just wanted to make sure, Christina, kind of what you're envisioning and articulating would be available publicly, right? This wouldn't be like, okay, good.
I was like, I don't know, we're gonna have a fun, like, something. But just on a, yeah. It would definitely be a public website, hands down. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Is there any last comments or things before we move on? I don't want to cut anybody off that didn't get a chance to speak. Okay. So it looks like we'll be then planning, and we did a little bit of that pre-agenda planning as well right here in the call, and I appreciate everyone stating those things upfront. So we already have, you know, we'll be inviting our Community Systems Director to come talk about hubs. We'll have some pre-work for Val, Sonya, and Modesta, and those others who want to join to talk about why this, you know, the foundation and why this is coming up and where we're at today. And then we'll be doing some work related to funding, and then I think the majority of our time will be doing just this, which is going over maybe areas of priority for each tribe and the state of what we want to accomplish together, and then start just working through that list and just making, you know, trying to make pathways and swim lanes for success. So I appreciate that, um, that conversation. And so our next part of our agenda, Sandy, I think is.
I'm here. Well, tribal general updates, I, I,
Yep.
I'm like, uh,
I can.
I don't know about you guys, but I was super tickled that we were able to roll over ECEF equity funds from grant year to grant year, and I, of course, then reached out to the other funding entity, Preschool Promise, said, hey, they're doing that, are you gonna do that? And what, they've indicated they're gonna do the same, so. I don't know, you guys, but that was a big relief. So. Anything else that, anything you need to share, Valerie, that? Any general updates?
For us with CT Clusey, one of the things is that we, you know, had the, the end of the year celebration for the children, and, and there was a wonderful gathering, and, and I, I asked to speak just for a few minutes to, to praise the children that had made it through the last couple of years of pandemic years, and, and congratulate them, of course, for grad, those graduating this year and that kind of thing, but just to, to praise them and encourage them to hopefully, you know, once they go out and about to college and become whatever it is they want to become and all that, that they bring it home. You know, but I just. Um, you know, but I just, we just praised them, all of us that were there, you know, the adults, where their teachers, uh, tribal council people, parents, everybody, we just, we gave them a, a big celebration. So we just told them they are warriors and asked them bring, to bring it home.
Nice. Anybody else out there? Got some nice tribal general updates, some positive things to leave us with?
I just wanted to say um that the, our E C E building is getting some uh needed updates that has um, that the building has needed for a little while now. And so with these needed uh, updates to the building, we're gonna, it's gonna be nicer for the kids and for the people that work there. And um they have moved um to the school, the K eight. So the, you know, little guys will get to see where they'll get to go in the future. But uh, not only that, it's been such a wonderful relationship now with um the five one nine J and uh the education entities here. And I'm really glad that Deanie Smith reached out to them and, you know, we just continue to work on those kind of collaborative efforts with our school district and, you know, um, talking about this, at one time, we didn't, uh, we didn't have a relationship with our school district. And now we do. And, you know, that was what I was hoping for with the early learning hub is that we would um have a relationship, but, you know, because um, they're not sure who they reach out, uh, who they should be reaching out to has made it real difficult for them. And now there is a, you know, now, even now, um, there's a group out there that is taking responsibility for um, uh, early learning uh, that is not in the field. So, you know, um, we work hard to communicate. And I think some, with something like this would be, you know, help with that communication.
Anybody else? Excuse me. Adjusting my standing desk because I can't sit for that long. I've gotta, you've gotta stand up, right? It's like, oh, yeah. Um, any other um general tribal updates? Hearing none. Move on to the last uh item on our agenda, and that's our closing adjournment.
Um, is it okay if I give a quick update? I just wanna
Of course.
Ask you guys, uh, we have some requests really. Um, our early learning council, and I know Angie, she couldn't be here today, Angie Blackwell, who is the E L C representative. She wanted to share this information with the group. Um, the early learning council is coordinating um home visiting services across the state. Those services um that are part of both O H A and the early learning division. So um, the question really is how, you know, how would tribes like to be involved or included in this? There is a committee being formed, um, that itself isn't really large enough to have maybe one rep from each of the tribes. But for example, we could bring information, like if we have one of you will join that committee, um, that person could be sort of a liaison between that committee and this one. So come back and share information, or we could bring considerations directly to the tribal advisory committee that come out of that work um for you all to, you know, advise on and make, make decisions on um, and then give that information back to the early learning council. I think it's important to also state that like, this isn't something that the E L D is um doing. This is just the early learning council, so they're the, the governing body of E L D, but they're really that cross, cross-sector partner group that um is trying to, you know, creates, you know, more alignment within our early learning system, make sure that health, human services, early learning um, and other educational and, and uh, and personal health wellness is part of the, the you know, the sphere of what, what touches the lives of children and families. So um, so I just want to share that information and see if you guys wanted to just chat about that. Um, either right now or um even give us a vote in the, in the comments um of what you think would be a good way for this committee to be part of that or involving the nine tribes.
I dropped kind of the high-level description in the chat, and happy to send you all what the early learning council has put together. Um, but the early learning council chair has discretion to appoint additional members and was really interested in um, hearing how uh the nine tribes would like to participate, and so wanted to use this time with you all as the tack to, to think about that.
I'm okay, and I don't know how other members feel of um having someone from this group represent. If everyone can, um, you know, is okay with that, because we have members on here that like Christina and them that directly work um with their hubs and in their capacity for their tribes. So it makes sense to me, um, and then report back.
I'm, I'm of the same thinking, um, this is Julie again calling from C T Clusey, and, and I agree with Sonia, same thing. Some, someone from our group goes and represents and brings it back to us.
I guess us a thumbs up from Valerie.
Sandy, great. Does anyone want to self-nominate or nominate one of your colleagues here?
Julie, Julie's sister, why don't you go to those meetings?
Uh, I can do that if, if everyone wants me to.
Yeah.
Do we need to take a vote? I'm, I'm so in the strong army of people today. I'm just like, I'm gonna own that. Okay, sorry. Guess I'm taking, I don't know what I've done.
I'm seeing thumbs up, so. Sounds like Julie, thank you so much. So I'll, I'll connect you Julie with um the convener of that committee and get you set up and so, and then just, i- if there's anything you need, let me know. And we can continue getting that information back to this broader T A C group, so you guys can consider what's going on with home visiting.
Nice.
Okay, um, and I think now, Sandy, sorry, we can do the closing if you'd like.
It's okay, we're good. Um. Well, I'd like somebody to, to um close us out. I feel like we had a productive meeting. Feel like we got some stuff out there talked about, got some forward motion. Also, thank you.
Not going up, stunk it for me, took the category. Thank you heavenly Father for bringing us here today, and Lord, we ask that you put your hands upon each and everyone here. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us each and every day. Thank you, Lord, for watching over the families that will be affected by our decisions today. In your name we pray, Lord, human.
Thank you, Valerie.
Last be everyone, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day, and here, we'll talk soon over email.
Yeah.
Feel, feel better, Valerie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.